Chief Shepherd.
Between us, how you feeling?
I hope.
Oh.
Well, yeah, I've got some.
I didn't find any in my box.
Ah.
I used up all excuse.
We didn't have any in our box.
Let's see, I I didn't make that money.
Good chair, I don't really need, you can keep it, so I just I don't care anyway now.
Sure.
Based on who they hire in their police department, I don't care.
Okay, anybody else?
He didn't hear that, did he?
I got more.
No, I don't think so.
All right, Tim, Tim. You got more too?
Make sure I save this off.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, I want the police to go first so that Lori can uh go ahead and talk and might stick around online.
So Lori, you don't wanna hear my Lori? Uh Chief Shepherd, you're up.
Without further ado, Lori.
Thanks for coming.
You ready for me?
Yeah, tell us why you're here.
Okay, alright. Well, I am here, um as I mentioned when I came in, I'm the executive director of the Licking County Humane Society. Uh we just moved from our old location in Heath out to our new location in Heath out on Hornwood Drive. Um.
Is that where they've been kind of furnished down?
It is, and here's an invitation, you are all welcome, I'm gonna send around everybody to welcome to it. Eleven thirty on Thursday. Um the reason I'm here actually is because I had approached um the mayor. Let me back up a little bit, what let me help make sure you understand the difference between animal control, Licking County Animal Control and the Licking County Humane Society. Licking County Animal Control is still the government entity that sits up on the corner of Route thirteen in Hopewell. We used to be the little yellow building right beside them. Um and they are responsible um by statute for stray animals. And um enforcing all of the licensing issues, you know, you buy your dog license, um they're responsible for that. As well as um enforcing like the vicious dog, new vicious dog laws and some of those kinds of things. So anything that has to do with animal control is what they're responsible for. The Humane Society um is permitted in the Ohio revised code to be responsible for cruelty investigations. And we have assumed that responsibility in Licking County with uh that started in two thousand ten. Prior to that, Licking County Animals Control managed it. But we have the right under our, under the Ohio revised code for the Humane Society to take on that responsibility. So we have a humane agent that has been approved by the probate court to provide the cruelty or to administer the cruelty investigations in the unincorporated areas of Licking County. So we don't serve New York City, we serve the unincorporated areas of the county. Um meanwhile, in the course of doing that, we started also serving all the cities and villages. Um because they needed help and they called and asked our humane agent help and she helped them. Um so when I came on as the executive director and started looking at the program, I realized two things, one.
How long have you been the executive director?
Since August of, not this past year, the year before.
Okay.
So it'll be two years in August. I became aware of two things, one, that we didn't in all of the villages and cities have explicit permission from the mayor to be acting within the village or city, which is required by Ohio revised code. Now I think in Heath, actually, we did have that, I think that the mayor had signed something early on that gave us permission to um assist law enforcement and to do investigations. Um some of the other villages, we didn't have, so we had to go back and clean that up a little bit and make sure that all the villages' mayors knew that we were serving them. Secondly, um we were doing it for free. And the Humane Society is a charity. We don't get tax dollars to operate our organization, all of our funding comes primarily from donors and fundraising. Um so basically, we were providing the service for free to all of the villages and cities on top of serving the county. Now the county, for the unincorporated areas, the county commissioners um pay us a stipend to provide that service. Uh but we weren't getting anything and we were assuming a lot of costs for serving the villages and the cities. So I back and looked at the Ohio revised code and the Ohio revised code does say that the villages and cities that were providing that need to pay us a minimum amount. Now keep in mind, those laws were written in the sixties and it says, I think, the city has to pay us twenty dollars or something like that, which obviously doesn't work for us. Um so what I did is I went back and I put some numbers together because I wanted all the villages and cities to know how much we were serving them because I think a lot of people didn't realize that we were even serving them.
Explain a little bit what that service entails and which might also help explain why um we've asked you to come speak during uh Chief Shepherd's, you know, mini.
Sure, sure. Well, our humane agent is Paula Evans and we contract with Paula Evans to administer that program. And so what Paula has been doing for the last two and a half years is she, anybody can make a referral about animal abuse or neglect. Um she has a hotline basically that she manages and any calls that come in twenty-four seven, she responds to cruelty investigation. So if somebody calls, a neighbor calls and says, you know, there's a dog next door that hasn't been fed for a month or um you know, there's cats that are being abused by, you know, neighbor kids or whatever, those are the kinds of cases, cruelty cases should respond to. Now keep in mind again, strays do not fall under our purview, this is specifically abuse and neglect toys and that includes livestock. So it doesn't just have to be cats and dogs, it can be any of that. Um most of our referrals were coming from either individuals or from law enforcement. Because what happened is law enforcement, you know, a neighbor would call the police and say, you know, I saw the neighbor beating the dog with a stick. And so law enforcement would call our humane agent and and she would assist them at the scene. Um so she's been doing a lot of that over the last, so that's another service that we've been providing is assisting law enforcement. If it was deemed that an animal had been abused or neglected, the humane agent also takes care of filing all the criminal charges against that person. So we've also been taking cases to court for the last two and a half years for criminal matters. Um for example, um a case that's specific to Heath, we had a case not too long ago at the end of last year where somebody had abused a puppy that the police called, she responded, we removed the animal. Um we then take care of the animal, so we either house the animal until it gets through the court process or if the owner surrenders the animal, then we can go ahead and place the animal for a gash. We incur the expenses for the vet and vetting the animal requires. We incur the expenses for sheltering that animal, whether it's for a week or a month or six months, whatever it is you know, these criminal cases get held up in court sometimes and this could go on. Um we ob- obviously are, the other thing I didn't mention is that we're a no kill shelter. So what that means is that we don't euthanize animals for space or convenience. So if an animal comes in and they've got a behavior problem, then we also incur the expense to provide assistance and maybe if that animal gets rehabilitated so that it can be safely placed into a home. So those are some of the services we've been providing. And I think if you spoke to your officers, they'd tell you that Paula Evans is always very responsive to her calls, whether it's day or night
Yeah, but Paula.
and she's an avid animal lover and she'll do whatever it is to to protect animals in the community, so. Those are the services we've been providing. So I started looking at, okay, well, how much is it costing us to administer this program? And um so I started pulling some numbers together, keep in mind, when we first started, um we were told, we were told we would get about twelve calls a month. Um which is now, in the last quarter, a hundred calls a month. Um so.
You you were told that by whom?
The previous dog warden.
Oh, okay.
When we took the program over.
Okay.
That it would be about twelve calls a month.
Okay.
So the program is a lot uh more rigorous than we had expected. Uh but that's okay, we're managing, uh we're managing it. Um started looking at numbers and I broke it down into how many are unincorporated numbers that we're serving and how many are village city numbers. And again, it was broken down into two categories. How many investigations did we do and how many animals did we actually confiscate or care for out of those investigations? So for Heath. Um and I do have your in numbers now, Mayor, Joe, I know you asked for that.
Okay.
Um in all of two thousand twelve, we investigated twenty-six cases in the village, in the city of Heath. And we removed eleven animals over the last, and that's for eleven and twelve. So basically, we have removed about uh four animals a year. So you see that not all of the investigations result in confiscation, she does a lot of humane education in the community. We also provide resources to people, so if she gets a call saying somebody says, I don't have any dog food and I'm really struggling and I couldn't feed the dog because I couldn't afford dog food, we, the Humane Society will provide dog food or flea treatment medicine or just education about the fact that it's not okay for your dog to be outside in twenty-four zero and tied to a box and it can't get it. So most of the cases that she responds to, she's providing education. But in a, in about four, about four animals a year out of the, a city of Heath, we actually confiscated and provided care for and then we rehomed them once they were either legally free for adoption or healthy enough to be adopted. Um and and these, you can imagine these animals coming in from these cases are not in very good shape. We had one that was dumped in the Walmart parking lot, um that had the most horrible case of mange we've ever seen and that took us six months to get her healthy, because her shoes are failing for adoption. Um so you know, it's 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 animals that are obviously abused and neglected. So I started looking at numbers and saying, okay, well, what would be a fair way to evaluate how much I would ask each of the villages and cities for? And so I looked at all the numbers over the course of last year and I used a formula, it's a two-part formula that basically contributes to the cost of the humane agent's salary as well as to the cost of the animals that we're caring for. And what I asked Heath to consider um paying for the programs, for the service is um a hundred and twenty-two dollars a month towards the cost of the humane agent's salary and um fifty-eight dollars and thirty-three cents a month towards the cost of caring for the animals, for a total of a hundred and eighty dollars and thirty-three cents a month. Um and I have to thank Mayor Johns because after I met with him last time, um the county has agreed to um pay their fair share.
Really? Really?
Mister Silva has agreed out of his budget to pay the rest because they don't want the program back.
Okay, they don't want what?
They don't want the program back.
Okay.
They don't wanna have to, they don't wanna have to administer this program, it's a lot, it's it's a lot.
What is the fair share?
So the county's fair share a month is um seventeen hundred and twenty-seven dollars a month. I have all the villages and cities, so this breaks it all down, uh.
In the mix, sure. It's Granville paying.
Granville's paying ten dollars a month because Granville didn't have any investigations or animals removed from Granville.
They don't have really need of the service.
They're not, they're not using the service.
Yeah, because their dogs.
They're all complaining.
We we run into uh and I know I've called Humane Society a couple of times in the past tense. Occasionally, we get a uh a fire where we have pets that have smoke inhalation. And we'll provide them oxygen and they're, they're in pretty serious condition and we have not been able to any.
I'm thinking it's probably, that must have been quite a while ago. Cause I've never heard of this coming in since I've been involved in Humane Society and I've been involved about four, four years.
Okay.
Most of it before that. Um we would absolutely assist with something like that, I mean, we we care about animals, that's all, that's what we do. We serve animals and we serve families who need help with their animals, so um if you ever get in a situation like that, call me directly. Um um we would, we would.
What's up, David?
Yeah.
We have a chief meeting tomorrow night. Station, and bring that up.
Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely, I mean, that's, yeah, that's, to me, that seems like a no-brainer that we would assist with whatever.
New sheriff in town, right? Sorry, Randy.
I mean, if the owner can't care for an animal, then somebody has to. So you know, don't, you know, don't hesitate to call me if something like that.
All right, could you, all that, all that hundred and eighty dollars and thirty-three cents a month, can you give me the breakdown again?
Sure.
You say a hundred and twenty-two?
Yeah, a hundred and twenty-two is what I would ask to contribute towards the cost of the uh humane agent's salary.
At sixty-eight? It's one thing.
Her salary is sixteen hundred dollars a month. And so Heath had eight percent of the calls, so that one hundred and twenty-two dollars is eight percent of her sixteen hundred dollar salary.
And the balance was?
And keep in mind that these numbers, I didn't have the fourth quarter numbers when I figured all this out, so these are only based on numbers in the first three quarters of last year.
You say sixty-eight, thirty-three?
Fifty-eight, thirty-three.
Fifty.
Fifty-eight, thirty-three, yeah.
There.
Coast to operation.
Yeah, and then what I did with the number of animals that were removed, I took the average number of animals that had been removed over a two-year period and I did a per animal cost of two hundred dollars. Now our actual per animal cost is closer to four hundred dollars. But I thought, I thought that two hundred dollars was reasonable, we're not looking to make any money off this program. All we wanna do is be able to continue to provide the service um without our donors being ultimately entirely responsible for the service. So that's where the two numbers.
Keep in mind that if the Humane Society did not do this for the city of Heath, somebody would have to do this for the city of Heath. There's no other entity in the county that's doing this. And so, you know, Chief Shepherd may end up from time to time having to have a dog in his uh office. Um somebody has to do this and in Licking County, um over the years, it has evolved to where the Humane Society is the provider of uh of this service. We currently have no mechanism uh of our own for doing this in situations that Lori has outlined.
And and animal control will not do it, they don't have the authority to provide equality investigations anymore because appropriate court has to provide the service. Um and nothing against animal control, but I think, I think you probably found that your service has improved over the last two and a half years in terms of somebody responding to law enforcement officers out in the field or somebody responding to um animal left at the hotel up here. I mean, I think we're very responsive to it in the community. And we're from Heath, I mean, it's important to us that Heath is a well-served community.
In your disaster plan, I think last year we had the drought and lack of power and everything and uh do you have means for animal storage or whatever, you know, at the shelters and such, what?
Um not pretty good. For our animals, but not for animals at large. Now what we we do have now, of course, we're in a new shelter now and the new shelter is uh set up, um it's all powered to have a generator. Um the generator's not installed yet, but it will be, uh everything's ready to go, we'll just have to get it hooked up. Um so we have the ability to care for any animals that are already in our care at that point. Um we have been early in this, we have not, I have not participated a lot in disaster plans, but I, that is on our long-term goal is to be more involved in that because we could eventually have a disaster in Licking County that would require more than just our animals being cared for. Um so I mean, we we do have four acres out there, we obviously have a lot more space than we had before, but if we had a huge disaster, you know, we're not set up for something like that, we don't have that.
Okay, Mr. President.
Since we're gonna have about twenty-two hundred dollars skin in the game, what sort of ongoing oversight do we expect to proceed?
Well, um the actual humane agent, I actually do her direct supervision. Um because we are a small organization, so I'm actually the person who supervises and administers, wa- over, administers over her program. Um really, that would be up to you guys in terms of what kind of reporting you wanted back, like with the county, I meet with them quarterly and I provide members quarterly for how many animals were, how many cases were investigated, how many animals were confiscated, we could, we could do that. We could send, if you rather have a written report on, you know, a quarterly basis, we could do that, it would really be up to you guys as to what kind of reporting back you want.
At least at least on the annual basis, if we can do a look back and kind of see how we fit into our eight percent presently.
Sure. Absolutely, and.
We've only had two incidents.
That's right.
This year, we're gonna have a look back, a recalculation of participation.
Absolutely, because on this, on, absolutely, and I think, I think annually is probably what we'll do.
This is a fluid, this is a fluid moving. That makes sense, yeah.
Because, you know, tomorrow, we could have a puppy mill in Granville and remove forty dogs and so it has to be, I want it to be fair. I want it to be fair to everybody that you're you're paying for the service you're getting and not for a service that you're not.
You said twenty-six cases, was that just for the year of two thousand twelve?
Calls. Calls.
Twenty-six, in that sep- separate investigations, separate referrals over various allegations.
Allergies.
We call them, we call them um.
The cases for what? For two thousand twelve or two thousand eleven as well?
Intakes. Twelve. The numbers.
The twenty-six is like two thousand twelve.
Twelve, yeah. The number, I I'm sorry, I don't have good numbers for you for two thousand and eleven, I have numbers, unfortunately, when when we, that was the year we began doing the program shortly right there before. And the way the humane agent was tracking them was how many individual contacts she had and that, I didn't think that was a fair representation because she had seventy-nine in Heath. But that might have been three contacts on the same case. And I mean, if three different people called on the same case, she was calculating it that way. So what I set up with her from twelve, two thousand twelve on is I wanted to know how many individual cases we do respond to. So I have two thousand and eleven numbers, but I think they're inflated. I know some cities and villages have had questions about our oversight, we are bored, we have a board oversight for our organization. Um again, we are a private five oh one C three charity, um so obviously, we 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 have to follow the ninety um on, you know, certain recording claims, I guess. But a board is our oversight entity.
Could you provide us with a copy of the manual and the report, tell us about it, it's just, just as an idea?
Sure. Sure. Absolutely.
That's the message from what you said.
Sure.
Any other question?
Yeah, are we looking to do this as like at the end of the year, what the actual cost is and we write a check for that amount? Or are we looking at an average and every year we pay in this average and then it, we get a balance plus or minus and stuff?
Well, I, I think this kind of goes to what Jeff was saying, um well, how are we trying to do this? We're trying to begin doing this, all right?
All right, let me say that, that uh the Humane Society out of the goodness of their hearts and wallets have been doing this for much of the county. Um they have received a small uh portion of money from the county government itself for this program. Um but they've not received, city Heath's never paid, you know, for this in the past. Um the uh, so what we're looking to.
I think the county money coach.
So what we're looking to try to do is to, first of all, I guess, establish this. I think the second, or or part of what your question kind of relates to what Jeff said, which is, you know, can we have an annual reevaluation as far as what the usage of the program from Heath has been? So that we can look at, is what we're paying fair? And and frankly, if it's gonna be one way, it's gotta be the other, okay? Now, I'll uh share with you that I am pleased and surprised by what Lori had to say uh about um the financial participation uh from the county. Because up until she just said that, that was not what I had been hearing. And what I was going to recommend is that this body uh fund this program to the same percentage that the county was willing to pay from from Lori's breakdown. Um but having now, I guess, the county agreeing that 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 uh that they're gonna pay all of that amount that you outlined, um then that's what I'm gonna recommend that we do as well. Um this is uh, again, this is a service that that we need to have and I don't wanna build any kennel space, uh you know, over by the the storage barn or whatever or or.
Although we do have an old tractor over there for sale, if anybody has.
Mr. President, what what amount are you, what amount are you pointing at, Lori?
One eighty, thirty-three per month.
Most of the uh, Granville pays us quarterly, at the end of each quarter, we basically submit an invoice to them at the end of each quarter. The county pays us on a monthly basis, at the end of each month, we submit an invoice to them, so really, we can set it up. Um I would prefer to do it on a monthly or a quarterly basis as opposed to waiting at the end of the year.
It's easier cash flow wise for you.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, this is something you need to understand too. The Humane Society does not have to provide this service to the city of Heath. Uh it could choose not to, should it uh uh goes, you know, go go to that point. Um and I, Lori has talked to me a couple of different times about this over the past five, six months maybe. And as I reviewed the information that she presented, as far as how she came up with the dollar figures for each village and city and then the the county as a whole. Um this is a very fact-based, data-driven uh analysis uh to try to determine a cost breakdown of the expenses to the program. And as she said, whereas the average cost for uh an animal that they have to bring in may be more along the lines of four hundred dollars, for this breakdown, she's used a dollar figure of two hundred dollars uh per animal. So um to me, uh the the, like I said, the facts and the data back up what she's asking for. Um if the county is willing to pay their fair share um for the county's use of this program, then it's hard for me to recommend that we do, that we do anything else.
You know, the ability of those.
Yes.
Well, we can't control what all, everybody else does, but Lori is talking to everybody else.
Yes, yes, now, I will tell you, there isn't one village that has opted out, um.
And opted out?
They basically, have basically said they won't contribute financially to the program and we basically said, then we won't serve you. Um so.
Who's that, who's that?
Kirkersville.
Kirkersville.
So at this point, if Kirkersville, I should say when Kirkersville, because they had pretty significant use of service from this program, or they get into a problem, uh we're not gonna, yeah, I mean, I I can't, I can't, it's not fair to the other villages to have them contribute and not.
Sorry, Charlie.
And I I I understand that some villages are poorer than others and, you know, I think we're, we were pretty sensitive to that, but um.
Task was on board, the project's on board, the assignment's on board.
Task, task list, they're all in process, they're going through committees right now, I've spoken to city council meetings and they're all in committees. The only person we actually have, the only two entities we actually have memorandum of understanding to with right now are the county and Granville. Everything else is going through the Utica, working with Utica, um.
Hanover.
Hanover, yes, Hanover's in process as well. Now, some of these programs have not, some of these villages have not used the program. All we're asking for the people who haven't used the program is to pay the five dollars a month that the Ohio revised code says they're supposed to pay. If you haven't used the program, then pay us five dollars a month just for the fact that we're probably gonna get called some point.
So we should have been paying twenty or twenty-five, we we haven't even been doing that.
Twenty dollars a month.
And that's by Ohio revised code.
Lori, do you need to make funding from United Way?
No, we don't need their mission, um because they have a very specific mission. Now, well, let me say this, I shouldn't say that we don't get any funding from United Way. People can handwrite in the Humane Society and we do get some direct donations that goes through United Way, but we are not one of their designated organizations. And you're kind of, right, it sounds like you're kind of looking at this operating kind of like a retrospective budgeting
Not an agency.
If you do the calculations at the end of the year and find out we underpaid or overpaid, you're not gonna adjust what we paid this year, but you, moving forward,
That's right.
you would pay it and then each year, it would, so it would all balance out.
So maybe throughout the first quarter, the following year, you can do the numbers, come before this committee, here's the results, here's the adjustments, up, down, the same, and then we can move forward on that.
Sure. Maybe.
So quarter on the, first quarter of the year.
What, what fund you, you are planning on beginning this hour?
Well, it's not something that we have budgets at any, it's budget. Let me talk to Leonard Richards about that.
Can you backseat on that?
Right, right, and a question and comment is, and being the devil's advocate on this, you know, we just lost a, an election of money and where are we cutting? And where are we adding to? And, you know, I'm just, I'm just wondering.
Well, in the budget process that I went through with all the department heads, they all can speak to the painfulness of that process. Um and we have some employees that did not get pay raises, correct? Yes, yeah, well, part of the collective bargaining agreements. Um but as it relates to this, as I said, this is not something that we've paid for in the past. Um Ohio revised code says that we should have been paying something for this past, so we weren't following that. Um what Lori is asking is, based on her analysis, to pay what is the fair share of Heath for the service. Um and again, if we choose not to pay, they will choose not to provide. Um I don't want these animals in, uh coming to my house.
And and you don't want the vet bills to go along with them either because the reality is, you have a, you have a s- an animal that's left in this motel over here, which has happened to us, and it's got mange and all kinds of health problems. We could literally have five hundred or eight hundred or a thousand dollars in one vet run. Um so, you know, I think you you don't want that, you pay that, but that would be, and then who cares for the animal? Who provides the day-to-day care for the animal, who houses the animal? Who houses the animal while the case is going through court?
Newark has their own.
Use case. Newark has their own humane officer. However, Newark is, um, in the process of, um, in fact, they just contacted me today about contracting with us to provide some sheltering and boarding for some of their community cases.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
Because they don't really have.
They don't, they, and they have a love-hate relationship with the pound and so those animals used to go to the pound and now they they don't. And so they were paying for private boarding and then they gotta go off for three thousand dollars and so they're not happy either, so, um. Not that, not that we have all this unlimited space, but we do have the bigger sheltering out so we can serve more animals, so.
Good question, I mean, if the Ohio revised, revised code states that each municipality or village, whatever, will pay twenty dollars. Uh, I'm just kinda curious about the Kirkersville, you know, I mean, would they be required to pay that regardless?
Yes.
He wanted five, they didn't give you five, they didn't pay the twenty, why don't you just force your hand to pay the twenty?
Because it's not worth the legal expenses to me to fight with them over twenty dollars because I would have to pay a private, our our attorney to represent us on that. And to me, I just said, that's not worth it to me, if you don't want the service. I'm sorry, but we're gonna have problems later, because the first time you have something bad happen in Kirkersville to an animal and we don't, we won't respond, we're gonna have a nightmare on their hands. Because there's nothing that makes the community more upset than child abuse and animal abuse. And it it happens, it happens in every community.
All right, well, are you legally obligated to respond? I mean, for you to refuse to offer your service, but just because somebody hasn't paid you, you refuse to respond on a cruelty, are you in violation of?
No, we're not, actually, I have seventeen, I have the code with me. And the code says that we may serve, it does not say we shall serve. So we have the ability to make that decision.
So like right now, the city of Newark has their own program.
I mean, you can do the-
Kirkersville can choose to do that if they want. Um, they can choose to establish their own, however they wanna try to handle these types of cases.
And if I may, Lori, uh, it is okay then for me to give out your cell number tomorrow night? Event about spoken language.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Very good, thank you.
So when Kirkersville comes back and decides they need it, make sure you charge them all the back.
Retro everything.
See, now, that that's my-
Because that's what's gonna happen.
I I think, I think you're absolutely right, Brian, that's exactly what's gonna happen. Um, you know, Lori has shared with me that 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 they, um, that that Kirkersville has used the service uh quite a bit um for this, that, or the other, I don't know exactly. Fast to know what their situation was.
Their numbers are not good out there, they they're, it's it's a poor village, it's just like Buckeye Lake, the worst numbers we have are out of Buckeye Lake. Um, it's it's a poor village, I, you know, I understand that. That's why Granville probably doesn't have any, you know, I mean, there's a huge correlation between domestic violence and animal abuse, child abuse, animal abuse. So they're, you're right, they're gonna have, it's just a matter of time before they have a problem.
So when there's, you know, stray cats running crazy through the village of Kirkersville, guess what? You're probably right, Brian, that they're they're gonna come knocking, I wouldn't be surprised.
You know.
Because I can't imagine us being able to handle what they do without, I mean, right now, I, we don't have anything in place. Yeah.
It'd be terrible not to have somebody to go to, you know, and I, we were talking about dogs and cats and farm animals and what have you, but in in year, couple, there's maybe four years ago or so, um, there was a a bird in in that, in our place of business. I mean, what kind of bird it was now? What do they call it, anyway, she told me to put a facial on it, so I didn't lose it on, so.
Oh, is it like a falcon or a hawk or something like that?
No, 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 one of these ones you see out of the lake, a hare, a hare and a-
Oh.
Anyways, it was sick and I finally found, nobody would take care of it. So you kind of feel terrible, you're looking at this animal, it can't fly, it's sick, it's got problems and and uh there's a place up on Southern Road and you may be familiar with, I can't remember the name of it, but uh they actually were willing to take it if we could get it there, so, you know, we went through the, here's how you make a dress and and bagged this bird. I'm like, but we got the bird there and they, and they actually felt good that we could help the bird and do something. I couldn't imagine if, you know, if he keeps going somewhere and you get cats and dogs or whatever, they can't, they can't help him. That's that's a terrible feeling to say, oh, well, just push about the doors, so.
Well, and beyond a situation like that, where it relates to this committee and 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 us as city government is, is when it's a law enforcement issue. When the police department's called for a, for an animal abuse case and it's gonna be prosecuted, that animal has to be held somewhere until either the owner or the court decides that owner ain't gonna keep that animal anymore.
We just have one of those.
And it can be a somewhat lengthy process. We don't have the means for doing that. It's kind of like, it's kind of like the health department. Does the city of Heath have its own health department? Yeah, but does it make more sense to contract with the county that has everything in place already? Yeah, it's just like, uh, you know, we could try to do it ourselves, but I don't think we could.
I got a building up there. Right next to a street department.
And Doug lives right across the road, there, why don't you become the new animal? No, you don't want that job.
Hey, I've got enough strays who've been dropped over there.
Yeah, and strays are a problem, I guess I, I I guess I wanna clarify that stray cats are a serious problem in every community. And unfortunately, there are not enough resources to care for all the cats. I mean, even into this new shelter, we've been six weeks, both of our cat rooms are already at capacity. So I I I wanna be honest with you that if you call and say, hey, there are thirty cats living out behind, you know, Tri-County, we're not gonna be able to take thirty cats. I mean, it's just the tr- the stray cat population is off the hook. Now, if you call and say, there's six kittens out here with no mommy and they're gonna get hit on the street on Eber Road, then we're gonna respond to that. Um, so, just like, I guess I wanna be clear about the whole fairer cat.
We haven't had stray cat problems in my neighborhood since a coyote showed up.
That's right.
Lake Pine?
Yeah, it is.
I don't have any.
Yes, but Travis, go ahead.
Tell me again, just for clarification, the one twenty-two and fifty-eight, tell me what that, what-
For the salary. One one twenty-two for the salary.
What's the choice for salary for you?
Right, that's eight percent of her salary, because eight percent of the calls can't get eaten.
So is this salary, like, we're gonna be fixed salary?
It will be fixed, definitely for this year, now, next year, I guess I'll have to evaluate that. We're, let me just tell you, that a humane agent's been serving, when when we first started this program, she was getting three hundred and fifty dollars a month in the county, and that's what she would have done, was three hundred and fifty dollars a month. So it, trust me, it's never been about the money, it's not, my staff make minimum wage at the Humane Society, we're not a rich organization. Um, and you aren't gonna be bumping up salaries to, I just want you to know that.
Just wanted to hear you say it.
I understand.
Here comes the pot of gold all of a sudden, and I said, oh, we've got, we don't, we don't have a board member, we don't have a dog in the fight, it's one-
Yeah, she's, she doesn't even- I understand.
To uh-
That was a good point.
Yeah.
Wrong, wrong.
Yeah.
Just don't wanna see a lot of that stuff, and then you look at the financials and all of a sudden, wow, we've got fifteen percent increase in our, our executive director here.
Absolutely. Well, yeah, not, yeah, I'm not, trust me, I'm-
That's, that's, that would be an alarming thing when we're just getting into this and all of a sudden we're seeing a lot of operating expenses now. Grow up at a fairly unusual, unexperienced rate of pace.
I understand. Yeah.
You said my piece.
I I really understand, I mean, she doesn't even, at this point, she's, hasn't even been getting paid mileage for driving all over the county to investigate these cases, so, um, we, I I promise you that that will be,
No, no, she's been doing a lot of charity work, it sounds like, for, you know, too long a time.
You'll be very concerned about that. Yeah.
This time she gets more fairly compensated, but but it's not gonna be crazy right after that.
Yeah. Absolutely. And I used to actually work with Deb at Child and Family Services for twenty-five years and took a significant pay cut to take this job because I think it's so important to serve, um-
She looks a lot happier.
Yeah, um, yeah, I worked, I worked in child abuse, I worked, I was supervisor in Child and Family Services for twenty-five years, um.
You found your passion.
I did, I did, so.
Good, good for you.
Nick, you have a question?
I drove her out of the baby center.
Don't, don't hit me, don't beat me.
Just like a dog.
I I'm a pet lover as much as anybody else, I've had one all my life. It just, I I can't, I can't wrap my head around what it sounds like to me. If we were supposed to be doing it, but you never asked for it now, and and now you've got this nice new facility, it's almost like we build it, not help but pay for it.
Okay, well, I, I, absolutely, I understand.
But why didn't you ask for it?
And I would tell you that we, we have been working, first of all, keep in mind, the Humane Society never had an executive director before. So when I came on as executive director, that was the first, I was the first one ever. So nobody had ever assessed any of this, evaluated any of this, we were governed by a board that was a volunteer group. So nobody had ever evaluated these issues, nobody even knew the Ohio revised code stuff was in there. We didn't even know at that point that we could con, we could administer the cruelty cases. We had no idea that was even ending the Ohio revised code. The other thing to keep in mind is that, and I said this to the county and I mean it wholeheartedly, if we were still sitting up there on Dogleg Road, we'd be having this exact same conversation because my organization in the last three years has spent a hundred thousand dollars on this program. That has nothing to do with the rebuilding. The new building was donated, every dollar that was raised for that building was donated dollars or fund-raised dollars. Every dollar that we get at this point to operate that building, we didn't, we didn't even know we were gonna be asking you for money when we started developing that building. Our ability to sustain that building, that plan's already been in place for the two years that we've been working to raise the money for. So I assure you, even if we were sitting up there on Dogleg Road, we'd be having this exact conversation because it's still not fair to a charity to be incurring these costs on behalf of their donors without some contribution to the service that's being provided, whether we're in that building or that building.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, and I guess, I think, you know, I I hear concerns about suspending the money and I agree, we, our budget is tight, but I also think that if you're not doing it and it falls to our police officers, we think one of the officers that we have off the road to go chase down dogs or whatever and then Mark has to house them and so, you know. I I I just think we're not, it's gonna cost a lot more if, for that, so, it's reasonable.
And it's not feasible to not have this service.
And the county's- Right, and the county still has to serve you, Animal Control still has to serve you on strays, that's what they're required to do. Um, they're still required to serve you on licensing issues or or vicious dog stuff. I mean, that that's still provided by those tag dollars that they get every year. You're fifteen dollars for your license, keep in mind, none of that money comes to the Humane Society either, that all goes to Animal Control. So they're still responsible for that service in the community as well.
Lori, I think what we need to do as we look long-term on this is, um, uh, as as the city's uh paying for uh the service, we do need to have, um, some sort of regularly scheduled increments of oversight of what we're getting for the money that's being allocated for the service. Um, and I think that, uh, you know, to be fair to the city and to be fair to the Humane Society, using the same, uh, you know, data-driven model, uh, we need to constantly be evaluating, is what we're paying a fair uh price for the services that 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 it's, that the program provides the residents of the city and the city itself.
Absolutely, you just let me know what increments you would feel most comfortable with and I'll be having, so, so here's what we provide to the county. Each quarter when we meet with the county, we provide a breakdown for them of how many cases came in and in what jurisdiction they came in. We track that in our database. So we know that, um, you know, X number of cases, each quarter, we have that list, um, so.
Why does the county choose to get that information quarterly?
You know, I've asked that question and I'm not really sure why, except that you have to remember that, um, the county had a lot of bad PR, uh, in the not-too-distant past over the whole, um, gas chamber thing. And, I mean, they had a lot of bad PR. And so I think participating and being active and involved in this maybe helps with some of, it's a positive thing for them now.
Okay.
Um, as opposed to kind of all the ugliness that went on during the gas chamber.
I see.
I I think that's what it is.
Okay, yeah, I I don't think we have that need for here, I don't think we need to be quarterly, that would probably be overkill.
And our humane agent actually, they actually asked her to come to those meetings. I mean, if that's something that you guys would like at some point, she, I'm sure she would be able to do that as well. So, yeah, just let us know what would be most eager needs to come to us with that.
Anybody have any more questions?
A grand opening on Thursday, everybody come out, we're gonna have cake. Cake and puppy, she can't do it better than that. It's a feel-good kind of thing.
Lori, that's-
I've never had puppy, what's it taste like? Okay, um, you know the little red flag next to his name.
Thanks for taking the time and sharing the information.
Sure.
A little puppy breath, you may not like your cake.
That's true, thank you.
Thanks.
Have a good evening.
You too.
Okay.
Thanks, thanks, Brian.
Okay. For the month of, uh, March, cause of service thirteen thirty-eight, hundred and twenty-nine offense reports, forty-seven arrests, thirty-three accidents, and eighty-one citations. Overtime, uh, for the month of March was seven thousand eight hundred forty-two and year-to-date totals twenty-three thousand, fifteen. I have three legislative requests. Uh, the first one is to, uh, uh redirect the city auction proceeds. Uh, we, uh, before the lot was moved, uh, we shared, uh, a percentage, uh, with Parks and Rec and, uh, and then the bicycles and the, uh, tools and things that nature that were taken out of impounded cars were sold individually and those proceeds went to DARE. And as you know, uh, Perry's, uh, uh, leaving us at, uh, in the May and we'll have no DARE program. So, uh, I'll just read the language they have here. Uh, request to redirect city auction proceeds that currently are earmarked for DARE in Parks and Recreation, uh, ensure all proceeds are deposited in the law enforcement trust.
How how much was going to Parks previously approximately?
Uh, it was a percentage of the, I can't remember if it was the impounds or the storage. Now, uh, frankly, I don't think Bob ever asked for it.
Yeah, Bob aware and, yeah.
Oh, he was aware. I said, you don't ask, you don't get it. So, uh, I don't think he'll listen. But, um, obviously, uh, because the lot was right next door to their building, they had some caretaking in the baby suite and it was probably really, uh, appropriate that they, uh, share. I think it, I think it was the impound, uh, fee. Jim?
Um, you gotta go into the law enforcement trust fund. Are we pigeonholed with what we can do with that money if it goes there as opposed to putting it in something else? Or how are we gonna pay the, the fees and everything associated with, you know, taxes and stuff like that?
Well, that's, if I may, yeah, if I, if I may, that was, uh, really what I had in mind, uh, uh, to to pay the monthly fee was, uh, uh-
Out of the trust fund?
No, no, um, the, uh, when we have our auctions and our, um, um, and and sell these vehicles, it's, it's, uh, the police department's gonna end up paying with two hundred fifty dollars a month. Now, I'm not saying it's coming out of the trust fund. Um, all I'm saying is it would equate, uh, hopefully, to about two hundred fifty dollars a month.
I guess what I'm-
There's nowhere else you can put it.
I guess, I guess what I'm trying to figure out is, why would, I mean, I'd rather have the money just go into like the-
why would, I mean, I'd rather have the money just go into like the general fund that could be earmarked to do anything with it as opposed to tie it up in the law enforcement trust fund that you're pigeonholed on what you can and can't spend it. Then if we wanna use it to pay for Jay's or whatever, I mean, we can, we can do it. I mean, it doesn't make any sense.
Should be matched fund, should be matched fund to the general fund.
Right now, the the trust fund, and I've, I've complained about this before and and uh the trust fund's used as a checking account. And uh, that's not a property, uh, we set aside money from the trust fund to pay for toes and uh naturally it's reimbursed.
Yeah.
But uh, so, I mean, if you wanna get down to nuts and bolts, we don't use that trust fund uh the way it's technically supposed to. I mean, it all comes out in the wash, for lack of a better term.
Let let let's back up a minute, Chief, 'cause I'm I'm, I I've got some questions here. Right now, all right, or prior to moving it to Jay's?
Right.
When we had auctions, the mon- the pro- the money that came from the auction of bicycles
Mm-hmm.
and also the contents that were in the vehicles.
Right.
Those proceeds went into the DARE program.
That's correct.
Okay, why?
Uh, well, it was before my time here, somebody uh legislated.
Okay. But that was a funding, that was gonna be a funding source for the DARE program.
Then it's a. Yes.
Okay, now, this legislative request then would pull that from the DAREs since we're not gonna have a DARE program anymore and put it into the law enforcement trust fund.
Yes.
Okay, now, why is that, why do you think that's the best place for that money to go?
Because the uh, the vast majority of of proceeds go to the trust fund anyway. And the police department does operate.
The vast majority of what proceeds? The proceeds of what?
Of the, from the auction.
So you're talking about the sale of vehicles, the the actual vehicle proceeds, that money goes into law enforcement trust fund?
Yes.
Okay.
Right.
Okay, so what you're suggesting then is, is to take not only then the 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 proceeds from the sale of the vehicles themselves, but also then the proceeds from the sale of the contents of those vehicles?
Right.
And all the bicycles that we auctioned off to at those things?
Yes.
And to just put all, just then as one, as one lump, put all that into the law enforcement trust fund?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right.
I don't mean to sound greedy, uh, we just bought uh uh computers with the law enforcement trust fund that needed replace. Um, it's, we're very frugal with that trust fund.
But do you have, have you ever had a press up where you've gotta fix lease agreement? We buy, we can pull out two hundred fifty dollars out of that fund each month.
Well, as I said, the money's set aside to pay uh uh the tow firms with the trust fund.
So we've expended like-type expenses?
Yes.
Already, been through an audit several times, no exceptions, no issue.
Well, when I first came here, um, within the first few months as chief, I questioned the uh the uh legality of of using trust fund money to uh and setting it aside to pay tow fees. And uh, the law director at the time said it was proper, so he has more degrees than I do.
And we've went through several audits.
Oh. We had an annual audit.
Ten years, and nobody's ever opened this up and saying
Yeah.
we don't like how this is coming in the way.
Yeah, and part of it was, you know.
So, so let me ask this then, is is the idea that the monthly lease payment amount that's gonna go to Jay's for the use of their space for our impound lot, will the payment of that come out of the law enforcement trust fund?
Well, the uh, the tow fees do.
Okay.
If he, if he, uh.
Take a look at the. So, will that, will the two hundred fifty payment then also come out of that law enforcement trust fund?
That was my idea. I I mean, it's gonna be on the police department. It's it's ours uh to uh operate and manage, in unless administration like that.
I think that's where it should come from. Well, that's what the mayor's asking for, Chief, is just, just what, it is your intent to actually make the lease payment out of the law enforcement trust fund.
Yeah, 'cause then, to me, it makes perfect sense, the law enforcement and the law enforcement.
Yeah.
And if we find, if we find that it is an issue.
That's, that's where I feel.
That could be, you could create new legislation to fix that.
Yeah. If you're gonna put the money in there, that's where you're gonna pay.
Well, I think the proceeds have to go in there.
We just make sure the current law director and the, and the current auditor are on the same page.
On the same page with all this, I mean, I mean, we can.
Everybody blesses the fact we can.
Yeah, I have a problem with laws and programs, I just thought that we were.
Every month, two fifty out of that account.
Well.
I didn't know you could do that.
Titter box and stuff, yeah, I just.
The uh finance director.
Yeah.
Uh, 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 came to me with the uh, he had a legislative press already filled out for me.
The finance director?
Yeah.
You mean the owner?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
It's an annex.
Just for, just for the record.
Yeah. Is that what you're saying, Mr. Alexander?
No, I'm saying Keith did.
Oh, thank you.
I don't call him mister.
I don't either.
Uh, anyway, his uh, uh, he, he brought to my attention that uh uh because uh the DAREs, uh, the demise of DAREs is is very near, that uh, you know, those proceeds should all go into trust fund. And I said, you know, I was thinking the very same thing. He even went ahead and signed it. But I said, we forgot about the Parks and Rec. Uh, again, I, I, yeah, I'm assuming it was because it was next door to him and
That, the, the.
cutting the lawn and things of that nature.
Yep. And when the auctions were taking place, they'd be taking place on the grounds there.
And it's not a whole lot of money, I'm I'm quite sure.
And and Keith was also understanding that the two fifty was all saved coming out of that.
I think, I. Yeah, I think it's, it's, uh, you know, it uh, it has to be a law enforcement purpose. Uh, operating our own uh impound lot is is a law enforcement purpose.
As long as our auditor and
Yeah.
subsequent state auditors.
If we wanted, if if we had been operating the impound lot still at Geller Park and we wanted to drop X ton of more rock in the parking lot there, we could have paid for that rock through the law enforcement trust fund?
Oh, I suppose if you could articulate it, uh, it uh had to do with the law enforcement mission.
And that was probably the idea behind the eight percent though. Like, well, probably that's where they made.
Yeah, I'm probably, again, that was before my time here and.
I think you're right, Brian, that's why, that's why I have come to understand, yeah.
Yes. You could all assume.
That's what I've heard.
Any, anybody?
Yeah, uh.
What, one quick question. Okay, the, my car gets impounded, it spends maybe two days at the lot. I decide to go get it, pay for the tow, pay for the, does that go to the trust fund also or is it go to a different?
No, that goes uh, that goes into the uh general fund, 'cause you pay for it right here on the.
That's just procedures, is that correct?
Yeah, they'll, uh, we're talking about auction proceeds. When we auction vehicles, it's because, yeah.
That is your question?
Yeah, I I just think that that, that money could pay the lease agreement.
Yeah, yeah, we don't, we don't see the the fees, the tow, the the uh, you know, storage fees or.
Any other questions? Good? You good?
Yeah.
Good?
I thought that was gonna be the easiest. How much, how much should the money be here to that chamber?
It might be.
Do you have any idea off the top of your head what's going on?
No, no, I don't. I mean, a- again, the auction proceeds are really the only thing we see. Uh, you know, a good, a good year will make uh ten to twenty thousand, bad year, we might make five. But uh, you know, Keith's always good at the end of each auction, uh, you know, referencing the numbers. If I could ever impound that ladder truck. I have to go.
Plant. He loves uh cocaine, editor.
Just got a medical, give me a good deal on it.
The medic ride has drugs on it.
Yep.
The medic ride has drugs on it.
Would you uh consider a swap of a slightly damaged police car? We have one available.
Eh, it's gone.
Okay.
Next. I just wanna make sure I was in order of my agenda. Uh, a request to appropriate thirty-one thousand seven hundred and eighty-two dollars and one cent from the general fund uh to purchase a uh twenty-twelve Dodge Charger sedan, fully equipped with required safety and emergency equipment. Menders Coglin uh dot com automotive and uh the uh, it's, it's, it's under state bid. And uh, as uh with the, the previous car, uh they are holding it for us. They were kind enough to hold for us, it was the last white and they had. So, uh, for that reason too, uh, I I would ask that the committee approves that we uh waive sec breeding, uh, so we can expedite the process and uh based, based upon this, you know, simply just a gentleman's agreement, hold it for us and plus the car.
All right, I've got two questions. Uh, anybody, go at that person, I'll get the first question.
Was there insurance on the vehicle?
Yes.
Did the insurance company pay?
Yes, eighteen thousand, wouldn't it matter?
I didn't hear the figure.
Yeah, I, I don't.
I don't know that Keith ever told me what the exact figure was that we got.
Yeah. I believe it was eighteen thousand, plus.
Have we gotten it or is that what is promised?
That uh.
Is that what they have agreed to?
That, that's what they've agreed, plus uh they will pay for the uh upfitting uh labor, uh basically what it will cost for for uh Public Safety Concepts to drive to Jay's towing, take off all the emergency equipment and reuse it on this new.
So that's why you're only asking for the purchase price of the car?
Right.
I was gonna ask you that.
That was gonna be my question.
Okay. Plus, plus, the uh, uh graphics will be included in the insurance claim.
So the insurance company has agreed to pay eighteen something for just the vehicle. Plus, they're gonna cover the costs of removing the police equipment from the damaged car,
Mm-hmm.
installing it into the new car.
Yes.
Putting the, the, the decal graphics on, on the new car.
Yes.
Okay.
What year, what year was the car that was?
Two, twenty-ten.
How many miles?
Uh, not, well, I told him at the hospital, uh, I saw the car sitting on the record and I'm sure wishing it was a blue one instead of a white one, but uh, uh, just joking. No, it was actually uh, one of the latest, uh, one of the white ones with the, see the spines on it.
So we would have bought that in January of ten?
Yes.
Thirty, forty thousand miles, safe to say?
More than, probably more than fifty or sixty.
Fifty, fifty?
Yeah, the, uh, we didn't uh, we didn't buy any cars last year and uh our two-year rotation plan kinda went out the door, so.
So with the eighteen thousand that we're getting, are we looking realistically after the money comes in, eleven thousand some? Twelve thousand?
Twelve, thirteen.
Oh, you mean out of our pocket? Yeah.
That cost us thirteen.
More.
More, more or less, yeah.
Yeah.
Deb, you have a question?
Yeah, I just was curious.
Well, uh, Officer Fisher was uh, uh, working uh patrol on State Route seventy-nine and he, and we got a hit on that brand-new uh, uh automatic license plate reader system that we have. It was a statewide pickup uh for domestic violence. He turned on the car and to pursue it and catch up with it, uh, and uh, uh, you know, he, we don't want to, we don't want him to know we're coming after him. They might, uh, you know, as soon as you turn those lights and sirens on, uh, the foot hits the floor. So, uh, uh, he turned on him and tried to uh catch up with him without using emergency equipment. But the, the suspect uh hit the intersection, ran a red light and forced Brad stop and uh activated his beacons and uh burped the siren and uh, but didn't see the truck to his right. And unfortunately, uh, Ohio revise code says you'll use both light and siren. And he did uh something that all of us do, uh, but uh it's at your own risk or, well, not your own, the city's risk, just uh, be appropriate, but uh, it's, it's common practice. You know, to try to, you know, get through there to an intersection quietly. We do the same thing on bank alarms and things like that. Uh, we can't run our siren all the way there and and let the bank robber know we're coming, for example. But it is incumbent upon us to make sure the intersection's clear. And uh, it wasn't.
Any other questions?
Did you see the video footage of the, oh, you know, it has the, the inboard cameras.
Camera.
Mm-hmm.
So you can, it has a, it has view from the side of the truck hitting them.
Yeah. Yeah, it, it'll make a heads spin, watch it.
Yeah.
And uh, there's also sensors in that, uh, uh, that impact was eleven, geez.
The officer, okay?
Yeah, he's on light duty, uh, but uh, he's, he's smiling. Well, not all the time, but uh, uh, he's he was on today.
We got three days off to the, but right, which the average is so long.
Three days off, he.
He was injured.
Oh, I thought you meant this one.
Yeah, that's what the aggravates say.
Well, I don't know where the hell they got their information. I haven't even discussed one.
They read their own.
Hmm?
They read their own. Where's this money coming out of?
That's what I read, just general fund or?
Capital improvement, capital have to come from.
Oh, cap, okay, I've got general fund there because I knew the insurance money would go into the general fund.
That can be allocated back to the capital improvements.
So does the legislation need to be?
You can change it to capital improvement.
I think it needs to come from, I mean, that's where we, that's where we get the money for the cars, is capital improvement fund, so that's, that's where I, and then we would, when we actually get the check, we can have another one to take it from general to capital.
Okay, you're good, good?
Yeah.
Please, any other questions?
So, is Brad is still on light duty?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Chief, you need this waived?
Yes, uh, uh, because, uh, again, because they're holding it, uh, just on the gentleman's agreement and uh, uh, I've got a car in a shop with a, a bad fuel pump and it takes about a week to get the, the fuel pump in. And uh, when, when it wrecked.
Is that Chad's? Pardon, is that Chad's car that's got that problem?
Well, we, we've, we've replaced two fuel pumps.
Oh, really?
As a matter of fact.
I just, I saw, I saw the hood and on his car, I've been.
What, Friday when I came into work or Thursday, Thursday or Friday?
Yeah, well, Chad took it, uh, helped take it out, we, we actually towed it with our ATV.
Really?
Over the truck.
Across the street?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, we had a police.
Police has more.
And sirens?
I don't know, I didn't ask, I didn't hear him. Maybe I should make an inquiry.
Yeah.
Yeah. Another instance.
Lesson learned.
But that's.
We can.
Cause you know, that night.
Did you, do you know with the the license plate readers, all they put is, okay, what damage?
Uh, yeah, it took an eleven G punch and kept on recording. And audio and you can hear him groaning and moaning in there and then uh, you know. You, we of course uh all had that, you know, we're uh we're always concerned that our manhood might be in question, so. He takes a breath and then gets on the radio and talks like nothing's wrong. And then as he, I don't think he got into his second sentence and you could tell he was hurting. Cause the dispatcher said.
Was it you that's? Was it the accident?
No, she said, do you need a squad as well, or something, something that, so. Anyway, he gave the old college truck.
What what sort of revenue have we realized from capturing license plates on this one?
I. I don't have a, I don't have a fix on that.
We're minus twenty-four thousand.
Well, I'm looking for the break even analysis. And how could this still happen? Well, if we lose cars every time we go after one.
Well, we might pull our system out.
Yeah. And we need to. You know, remember, we've only got two automatic license plate readers.
Thank God.
Put those in the blue car.
Perfect. High mileage dude.
How light we are without the advocate here.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Oh boy.
Now here, I've got an easy one for you. This is a, this is an easy one. I shouldn't have to entertain any questions, but I will.
Oh, that's all you had to say.
A request to appropriate two thousand three hundred and thirty-two dollars and forty-six cents from within the general fund to purchase batteries and defibrillator parts or pads for our current inventory of AEDs. Because uh Sergeant Hunt learned uh that they were expired. I didn't know they expired.
Oh.
No, rules.
All you gotta do is.
I'm a fireman. That was a forty and slip, wasn't it?
That's two never missing out two.
Man.
Never.
Yeah, yeah.
Damn, you have a question?
Yeah, I think, I may be wrong in this, but I was thinking that maybe he's. Those in first place or something like that, and then we, I know we did others and stuff like that. I know we had one down at maybe Hoback or something like that and everything. I'm just wondering if if the batteries in the ones here are bad and pads, I wonder if the other ones is. I don't know who checks that or who, I mean, is, is it a number on it or do you have to to check them out? Is it something Chief, you could maybe look into or something?
We uh.
I know we get to the school.
We replaced in the last, I'm sure there's still current pads and the batteries, the one in City Hall and the brake room and Brian Crable brought me the one for the ball dyno.
Okay.
And uh I think he went ahead, uh he approved it. Went ahead, out of my squad budget, replaced the stuff, but one set of pads, batteries and the AED out of the ball.
I was gonna say, if there's something we know about, I mean, I think. Honestly, honestly, Keith Huggins has been uh diligent and and vocal about, you know, these AEDs and he's he's probably been the the person most on top of making sure that where do we have these things and are they uh are they not expired?
Yeah.
How about the school?
Can you tell the schools?
To the school?
Well, that's our son's duty now.
The CPR staff, the nurse and the East School Systems and some of their staff, but uh I haven't checked all of it. How about, have you just got the one hanging on the wall? You've got some in the cruiser.
Oh, every cruiser's got one. And I think, well, you know, sometimes we get recalls and uh uh but for some reason uh Chad has been, you know, he took it upon himself to inspect all the AEDs. May have been prompted by some kind of recall or manufacturer reminder or something, I don't know.
Say two to two, no more than three years on your electric paddles. And then uh yeah, your batteries, yours takes a bunch of little battery, you know, that.
I have one in my car over at work.
So.
It's for me.
Usually it's about two hundred and fifty dollars a AED for the battery replacement. I'll give you. Maybe East Supremo wants to donate.
What's, I I mean.
There's sponsorship for.
Like I said, if if, you know, I think if someone would have brought it to the attention or, you know, that they might have, cause we initially, you know, bought them for the the things and stuff, but I guess I never even gave a thought about upkeep maintenance on them or anything, you know, and stuff, but. I know we, you know.
It's never talked about in.
You know.
When we get re-recertified or anything, I I mean.
Well, it should go into alarm status after a while, but you know.
Do you?
They self-check.
Unless the tire is really expired.
You have to open the trunk and look inside the bag.
That's that little voice been telling you, help.
Oh my.
Oh shoot.
I'm I'm for it, but maybe we can also check other areas to fund it as as we proceed with the process.
Well, well, I even requested second waiver, second reading on this, I, I, we're talking life and limb and if if we fart or, well, if we mess it up too long, uh and we have to use one.
Yeah, no, I suggest you go ahead and do this and then I'll I'll see if we can't get, maybe September will give like donate money to the general fund and and.
Yeah.
To replace funds.
Yeah, so we can spend the money now and if September wants to do it, then he just says.
Yeah, and you know, to to offset the cost of, I don't know if they did the whole amount or whatever, I'm not sure where our budget is, fundraiser, we got a little bit. Hey Nick, what do we have, what do we have as far as down like at the wastewater plant, some of the other uh facilities, do you have any idea?
We 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 don't have one at the wastewater plant.
No? Okay. Alright.
I don't know, uh, but the Jay House had one, uh and I know Jay had contacted me, that's one, that was the one I used to carry.
Yeah.
Uh, and it went out to the uh the activity center, the whatever, I think he's still, I have that out there, I don't know where it's at.
The rec center?
The rec center.
Well, it's his responsibility to make sure that that one's.
I'm sorry.
Said it's his responsibility to make sure that that one's on.
Tell me what you need. Need a vacation. That's twenty-four hundred dollars.
Doug, you're good? Doug, you're good? Thank you, Chief.
Mm-hmm. And that concludes.
My report.
Really?
Any further questions for Chief Shepherd?
Um. Thursday is the thing at Bob Evans, right?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, April eleventh and uh.
Were you gonna have the, where did it?
It's aware of it.
It's at Bob Evans.
Oh, is it? Oh, okay.
Yeah, and uh with a little help from our friends, uh uh got the self-service uh pull your raffle ticket out, put three bucks in, put it in a deposit box and uh uh I think we sold about twenty of them here just a month a day.
Good.
So hopefully uh it goes well. A lot of people were admiring it and seeing how cute it was, but uh.
There's a picture in case somebody didn't see it.
There's a, what's it around?
Yeah.
And you know, what's the hours at Bond Evans?
All day, right?
It's all day from.
Nine AM to something?
It's nine to eight PM.
I I I bought that uh for for the Beat the Heat program and and then uh.
I'm just so glad that officer wasn't driving that one.
Uh, decided to raffle along with one of my Johnny Lightning models and uh one of my t-shirts.
Facebook.
What's this for now? What's going on?
It's a raffle.
Yours truly.
Uh, probably Thurs- Thursday at Bob Evans.
Oh, how much are tickets or whatever?
Three dollars.
Three dollar?
That little car is three hundred dollars.
Is that, what's the size of that car?
I know.
No, you can't.
Nah, you wouldn't fit.
Two kids will fit in.
What what's the weight limit on the car?
Two, two toddlers. Mark and I were gonna take turns.
I paid three bucks to see that take.
How how's the new clerk working out?
Good. She is uh uh.
It's her crazy family you can't stand.
No, she's uh she's she's doing fine, catching on quick and uh keeps her nose to the ground and again, she's a baker.
She's not her brother.
Any any other questions for the chief?
Thanks, Chief.
Moving on, Chief Higginson, you're up.
Very good. Hey, there's uh firefighter classes going on up at Sin City if you want.
Fulfill that dream.
Okay, let me, let me statistics. Thirty-two fire runs, eighty-eight for the year compared to thirty-three and one oh four the previous year. Now a little bit on fire runs, EMS calls, a hundred and fifty-six, four ninety-five for this year versus uh four thirty-eight. See last year, eighty-seven transports, two seventy-four versus two hundred and seventy-three. So we're one up over this time last year in my rolling records. I have no legislative requests.
Yay.
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 But uh anyway, I'll just. Wages, as you can see, overtime, two thousand twelve. Uh wages for this year, sixty-four, six ninety-four, overtime for the month is fifteen thousand, eighty-nine dollars even. Yearly total of uh forty-four, five forty-one, twenty, so we're down a little bit over this time last year. Under equipment, um Medic nine, which is our two thousand five, about eighty thousand miles. Um, went in today for tires, they called us and said it needed new tie rods, or excuse me, not tie rods, but kingpins. We just replaced kingpins in November of last year, so caused questioning, so gonna call in, we're gonna run that down. Calls tonight, tomorrow morning, down to plaques and things.
Okay.
And have that checked out. It shouldn't be wearing, it's only had eleven thousand miles on it.
Yeah.
And the tires have been wearing even, but it, they were down into the wear bars, so nine, get the tie rods, new tires, two electronic speakers.
Is nine the one that's at Station Two?
That's correct.
Okay. So do we have our spare Medic on duty now?
We put about eleven thousand miles on you. I'm sorry.
Do we have our spare Medic on on the roads now then?
Yeah.
Okay.
Our older model is uh, yeah. So uh that, we had our backflows tested, which is, you know, required annually. City heated, that was taken care of, but it passed last year, we had a little bit of stuff we had to review.
Appleman's happy?
Um, I left him in Johnny's mailbox or whatever, so. Uh, he should be coming pretty quick. And my command vehicle, the rear end is going bad again, making all kinds of racket, I'm driving it, they told me uh the J's wouldn't wouldn't hurt it, uh it's already grinding. Uh, that's the second rear end in there. Candy says it's, there's too much weight on it. He was referring to me or not. I've been telling him for months that it was making a grinding noise and and I thought my brake shoes maybe were backed up and sure it'd be that there was no problem with it, but they backed it up about three feet in the J's the other day and I said, your rear ends, you've got bearings and everything else is going bad, so. Anyway. They are.
Have they quoted?
Find must.
Have they quoted the cost on that yet?
No, no, they haven't, they're trying. When I had it redone three years ago, um with about about forty-five thousand miles on it, uh there was no used rear ends available, they had to shave.
Pick that red for you.
To do.
Your mom.
New Camiavir.
Yeah. Make sure he gets a raffle ticket.
Yeah, but Mason wouldn't have him drive around. Lieutenant Mason. But uh anyway, that's what they're looking for, a used rear end, but uh before they shipped it to, up to Cleveland, it was down about two weeks and it had all the gearing. Or they put it in some, I don't know whether they've got. But that model has had problems and that's something I have not checked.
How long ago was that?
Um, approximately three years ago.
Eleven thousand. Eleven thousand.
No, that was uh what we put on, on.
That was kingpins.
Uh, that that vehicle, for this being the second bad rear end, has about seventy-eight thousand miles on my Ford pickup truck, so. There isn't, there there's no reason for that to go bad like that, but uh uh before the gearing actually had, Keith broke off of it and such, so. And I'm not putting that kind of a a strain on it, maybe a lightweight pickup truck, but I've got about a thousand pounds in the back with the pullout and the gear that I carry, so it shouldn't be causing a problem, but uh I'm thinking it was close to four thousand dollars last time.
What age is that?
That is a two thousand.
Three? How many miles are on it?
Uh, under eighty thousand, it's like seventy-eight thousand now. It still runs good, I've had very little problem with it other than the rear ends, so. So anyway, they're in the process, J's, of uh checking into that for me.
Let me know when you get that information. Let me know what it, don't don't have me fix anything yet, let let me know what it is first and we'll talk about it. Be curious to see.
Nothing under personnel, transport.
Just had a question for you, Chief.
I'm sorry.
Can we back up a minute here?
Yeah.
On the the numbers for EMS and transports. Quick numbers here, the the number of transports year-to-date versus the runs. Fifty-five percent this year are being transported, sixty-two percent in twenty twelve. In other words, transports are flat, your runs are up. Do you see that as a a trend, is it a you getting folks who are refusing transports for reasons or?
No, um. And I guess the best answer is I have not researched it, that probably the fairest answer to give you. Haven't seen any, sometimes you just know where I'm no reason for some of this, but uh.
Trying to determine if it's a trend or.
Right.
If our revenue's flat, but our runs are up. To make up the runs or people just not wanting to transport for the cost or the coverage or whatever. I'm just curious. Normally they run pretty well.
The last month, um that we had six more uh transports than the year ago.
We'll just, we'll just live a year and day for for the first few days.
So, Mark, your question? On your transports, I never really thought of this until you just mentioned that. Your transport, I always assume a lot of them are like in accidents and things like that, but you probably do a lot of tr- going to the houses and then transporting or not transporting from a house. Do you ever break it down between like, you know, uh, what I'm saying, like a house or 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 a business or buildings like that as opposed to an accident, something like that? Break down, you know what I mean? The, I'm just curious to see if you have, when you do have a call at an accident, you're more likely to transport than you are if you go to the house, or you're more likely to transport from a house? And so if you got, or is it about the same percentages? Yeah, I mean, I'm just, you know, trying to.
That's something I could.
You know, house or business.
Have downloaded off the computer and had that in a pile of papers.
I'd like to know about mutual aid mixes too on these.
Well, while we're on that roll or whatever, let me just, um, I ran, of course, if I may, get off the beaten path. Of course, you read the newspaper about the fire and all that and how all the departments and such. Uh, we never had a unit uh at that fire. Uh, we should have been one of the first in, but we had both of our EMS units were tied up at the time taking heat calls. Uh, so we didn't have, it was Kozlowski and myself, Captain Bob, myself are the only two. Uh, so, we didn't have, it was Kozlowski and myself, Captain Bob, myself were the only two at the firehouse. Initially, they called for engine one. We didn't have the manpower to send it because we would have the city unprotected to run down there. And then a little later, um, they called for our tower and it was still Bob and I. By then, I had both medics out at the hospital, so they started, you know, bypassing us. When Medic Nine cleared the hospital, they immediately dispatched him on a cardiac arrest up at the dialysis center and they took that patient in from the dialysis, back to the hospital. And then it was just kind of hit and miss and we took several EMS calls for it.
Hebron had an EMS run in North End Newark too, I think.
I'm sorry?
Hebron had an EMS run on North End Newark too.
The county was pretty, pretty well tapped.
Yeah.
I mean, when you figure fourteen departments out of nineteen, uh, I mean, Utica, Homer, uh, the City of Heath, there was, there was just such a few that were not represented at that fire. But, uh, anyway, uh, and then the article in the paper this last weekend, didn't you stick right in the manpower situation and all that? So, I cranked out some numbers. Basically, two thousand and twelve, um, we gave Newark City two hundred and sixteen, uh, runs. And I didn't, on the given side, I haven't broken down into fire, I've got that, I just took out, actually got that out.
As far as whether it was fire or squad?
Right, just, we gave Newark two hundred and sixteen mutual aids. We got back ninety-two fire calls where Newark came in and backed us up on fire calls and fifty EMS calls. So, a hundred and forty-two to two sixteen, that's a one point five, two to one ratio.
Uh-huh.
Now, this year, when you add the...
So, two sixteen out and how much did we have coming in?
Two sixteen and we had a hundred and forty-two that we got back from the City of Newark.
Okay, and this is in two thousand and twelve?
This was two thousand and twelve.
How about eleven?
Uh, I didn't, I have not researched that at all there.
Newark did away with their minimum manning at the end of two thousand and eleven? Two thousand and twelve was kind of when that went into place, right?
Right.
Okay.
And you had me run those stats for like the first eight months of the year and you really didn't see much of a change.
Uh-huh.
And that's what's so hard to give you facts and figures because there's so many different variables. Not to mention change in run cards. They may be calling us for everything at one time, they change their run cards and they start pulling off of, you know. Since some of this started, or Township started a part-time program, Newt Township started a part-time program, Madison, Hannover, all implemented part-time. So, we were the only game in town at one time, now they're pulling from other places. So, the numbers change, but with the change of a run card and they start pulling a lot more out of Granville, our numbers look better. But Newark is still calling mutual aid into their city.
Yeah.
So, it's, that's a very hard one for me to try to give you guys good figures.
See, that's the dynamic that is, makes it frustrating. First of all, you know, and I kind of wish that the advocate reporter was here because I was actually thinking about this topic earlier today, chief. Whenever I see articles about that, all they ever talk to is either Stickrader, Decker and McElfrish. All they ever look at it from is from the perspective of Newark's own department. And what are your run times, how many calls do you have and blah, blah, blah. The issue with the reduction of their manning, the, the, the real story is what impact has it had on all the surrounding departments? That's where the story is. And they never seem to get to that topic because I, I, my feeling, uh, like, it's like what you're saying. Overall, the number of mutual aid runs needing to go into the City of Newark has increased. Maybe not just from the, maybe not just from the City of Heath, but total runs, it's increased. Because they don't have the staffing on that they used to have.
Um, for two thousand and twelve, uh, what was the average? Um, it was basically, uh, overall mutual aid was, uh, one point two six to one. Uh, right now, it's two point seven to one average or whatever. So, we have gone up almost double the mutual aids. Now, this time, uh, for the first three months of the year, um, January, we gave Newark twenty-nine mutual aid calls. Those are combination fire EMS and I've got a breakdown which, which we received eleven back. February, we gave Newark forty-one mutual aids, so we got twelve back. And, and when we get Newark back, it's either we're tied up on a couple EMS calls or a fire, um, or in most cases, when we are dispatched on a, a fire, Newark automatically, depending on the location within the city, Newark City sends up an engine our direction and that's how we get most of our mutual aids back. But for February forty-one to twelve, that's a three point four to one ratio in their favor. For the month of March, it was forty runs that we gave the City of Newark specifically and we got fifteen back. So, uh...
And one of the realities that, and again, I'll go back to these articles, I see, all I see is what's the average runtime for a Newark run?
Yeah.
That's not the issue. The issue is, if you, if you're gonna work under the assumption that Newark firehouses are typically closer to Newark residents than surrounding areas' firehouses. Generally, I would say that's true. But the issue is, how long is the run when a Heath medic has to go north of the courthouse square to pick somebody up? Because they don't have the staff on duty in that station off the square to handle it, you know? Yeah, Newark's runs may be the same because if Newark's taking the run, their people are at the same places that they've been. They don't have as many people, so now you've got squads coming from all over. The average runtime is gonna increase because they don't have as much equipment available to run. And so, and so the people aren't getting, these articles make you think that the people of Newark are getting the same level of service that they used to get. And I just don't think that's the case because they're not looking at this right.
And, and that's a hard one from, you're absolutely correct. From my perspective as well, safety forces, we're just, we try to get a service as quickly as we can to whoever needs help. Um, but the City of Heath residents are paying for that service no matter where it gets or, or where it comes from. Um, we are taxed more, uh, especially our Station Two goes into Newark downtown a lot. And I know for a fact Newark has units available out at the West End Station. They have a staffed care medical...
Out on West Main?
Out on West Main Street, but because we are much closer proximity. And, and I've showed you, showed you that before.
Which is good from the standpoint of trying to provide good service to that person who is needing the squad. I mean, I, I understand the idea of trying to get a squad that's closest to that person.
Showed you in black and white from Assistant Chief Decker that they call our fire units while they still have, you know, they used to cross man, medics would respond to a fire scene and they would utilize their personnel off of those medic units to help fight the fire.
Who is they, who calls? Is it the Newark Fire Department or is it?
Actually, Licking County nine-one-one dispatches us, but these are predetermined. You heard me talk about run cars. You know, if the, if the fire road is south of City Hall, we're gonna, first in engine's gonna be Hebron Fire. If it's north, we're gonna get Engine Three. If it's Green Valley Drive, it's gonna be Licking Township. We sat down, we looked at things and we put it all in, uh, black and white several years ago. So, the incident commander didn't have to think, okay, where do I want to get my next? And if fire company's tied up, then they pull from Madison or another engine out of Newark or whatever, it's all pre- you just say, fill the run card, start me my next two mutual aid engines, you don't have to decide.
But what Newark will do, but what Newark will do is they'll report that an engine is offline, right? That an engine's not being staffed. When Newark goes lower on their staffing, they'll tell the nine-one-one center, this engine's not on today, right? So, now the dispatch center knows as I'm going down through the pecking order of run cards, here's an option that's now off the table because the City of Newark's not staffing it. And what you're saying is just what, and, and what chief is saying is, is that they used to take people, if they had a fire scene, they'd take their people on medics, run into the scene and they would fight that fire. And what you're saying is, is that's not happening anymore. They're keeping the personnel who are supposed to staff medics in station with that medic and making us go take, be a mutual aid on the fire run.
That's correct.
They have people, but they don't want to send those people in, in the medic because they want that medic to stay on, on duty.
And why do they want that medic?
EMS billing.
Thank you.
There you go.
Yeah, uh, and that takes about a tenth of a second to answer.
Got a, got a question. Are we still very heavy getting assistance from Newark, um, from the fire department or police department?
Uh, actually, it's, uh, it's probably them calling us more often.
Because at one time, in my early years, there was a comment made that, that we've called their police department a lot. Now, you're telling me it's gone the opposite?
No, I, I, I'm just saying that I recognize that they've, uh, called upon us, uh, that, that, uh, more often than they had in the past. No, we still re- rely a lot on, uh, our, our neighbors because, uh, there's only two officers on the street.
And also sheriff department too, right, chief?
I guess, I guess my question is, is do we want to get real critical on this end if we're using on this? And will we lose overall if we start going?
Yeah, well, that's something I said.
I'm sorry.
I, I was just gonna say, I, I've said this much the same when this topic has come up. Where we may be giving, uh, in excess, uh, in, uh, fire, uh, mutual aid, uh, we're, we're picking up a lot of police mutual aid.
You mean receiving aid from them or giving aid to them?
Receiving from them.
Cause I thought you just said that we have been giving more aid to them than we have in the past.
We, we ha- we've been asked, uh, more than, than in the past. Typically, we don't have, we can't because we're, we're tied up.
Yeah.
The flip side of that.
They're asking you more, but the gap is getting narrower even though they're still providing more. I, I don't even know if I'd describe it as that, it's just, uh, uh, up until the last year or two, they never would ask, uh, for, for police assistance from us. So, they're, you know, they're getting busier and they're, uh, just like I read, in this filing, calls go up and manpower decreases.
Yeah, that being said, Heath and I, I always go back to the big ones because that's the only time you really see the system work. All of the in, we had...
Everybody and their brother.
Outpouring and just very similar in circumstances to what Newark had. Tim's hand doesn't count. But, uh, in two thousand and twelve, we gave Hebron twenty-six mutual aid calls. Uh, they gave us back sixty-nine. So...
It's because we're getting pulled north, we're pulling them north.
Taxing them a lot more than we're giving them. The fire company was seventy-five, but we gave them fire EMS.
Fire company, is that Licking Township?
Uh, Licking Township, Jackson Town. And there's times that they just, and, you know, as a five o'clock until their night crew comes on, there isn't anybody there. And some of their key volunteers now have gotten other jobs and things. They're having a half a time staff at some time. That may not be our responsibility, but when somebody needs help and nobody shows up, we get called or Hebron gets called. Um, fire company, we made seventy-five total runs for them last year and we got thirty-two back. So, but I mean, in all, bottom line, for two thousand and twelve, we did three hundred and forty-four total assistance calls surrounding county and we got back two hundred and seventy-four in exchange. Two hundred and seventy-four, it was three hundred and forty-four we gave. And that's like one point two six to one.
I take care of the number guy, is that correct? Three forty-four to two seventy-four.
Well, that's, you know, it's off by forty.
But what's the ratio?
Two seventy-four.
Two seventy-four and it's three forty-four.
One point two five.
I got one point two six, so.
Hot.
Right.
Love me to round up with the fifth dozen of them, here you got it.
I'm validating my numbers.
You won't let me leave that one down, boy.
Yeah.
So, anyway, but, you know, this year, it's, it's up to, uh, two point seven to one ratio and that's...
And I'm sorry to take up your time with that conversation, but I just, that article ran and I was actually thinking about the same thing and then you brought it up and then that got me going.
And that's why I cranked a bunch of numbers today because I just kind of figured out the cutoff and, and, but, you know, what do you do?
I said, they're missing the story, they're, they're missing at least half the story.
Search for some others. Our posts are searching for them.
But you're absolutely correct.
That's a good story.
They, you know, they can say, uh, we're seeing no difference with the manpower dropping five and six people.
Yeah.
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
The tower is shut down, you know? Medic one, which was their busiest medic, is shut down and they're relying on their outer stations and things and they're making up when they can't make calls with the surrounding fire department.
Cause all the advocates looking at is what are the run cards that Newark's got? Doc, well, of course, there is going to change.
I mean, response times, if you looked at the, and that was based on fire call, we had, there was six seconds difference between the City of Newark and the City of Heath. That's been a few months ago, you saw that debate, whatever, that's phenomenal time. So, some of the best in the state. But anyway, that being said, okay, any other questions on that? Because... So, under training, um, I had reported that we had several people going SWIC, Baughman and Warren McCord, all were going to schools and they were canceled due to lack of attendance. So, we've already got refund on our money on that.
Is that a problem with certification?
Um, these classes were more beneficial for the experienced versus certi- we have enough hours certification wise with the online and the, and the training, fire card wise. I can, as fire chief, I can sign off on any training that I see that the state's got accounted as training. So, anywho, uh, old business, the EMS software and I almost, it won't have been working tonight, you've been up here talking. I know we've been reporting on that, we've had Eileen, we've had their IT person, uh, there's still a lot of issues with it. Um, I was in on some conversations the other day and we only got half the picture when we bought into this and there were several other options. We were given one option, you either had to go this route or fifty thousand dollars in fees.
Yeah, cause Med Bell was gonna help pay the costs for...
Well, we got a story the other day and there's two or three other options that allow us to program and according to what Warren and Eileen and all that, it's gonna cost the same amount of money or less, but we will be able to customize this software and, uh, so.
That sounds better than the option that we went with.
Right, but we were only offered two options.
I know, that's what I mean.
And it's just like, why? And it's like, just so...
When's Warren working again?
Yeah. When's Warren's next shift?
Um, Warren will be on tomorrow.
All right, let's get together.
Okay. So...
Should I call Eileen for that too?
Grant money.
Chief, should I call Eileen for that too?
Um...
Or do you want to have the conversation first?
I'll let, let's, I'll have Warren give you a call, talk to you and then you think if you want to bring Eileen in on this or not.
All right.
I think he'll be able to just, you'll be able to...
Yeah, okay. Yeah, okay.
Um, I talked last week with the grant people and it's like, where's her money at? And they're like, well, no one said we were getting any money. And it's like.
What equipment was that for again?
This is the federal, this is for the air packs.
Yeah, yeah.
And when my grant writer called up to make sure the paperwork was processed and the woman, uh, with the federal government said, I bet you guys are tickled that you're getting all this money. Well, we, you know, assumed, we got a, a number, it said all your paperwork and it was awards number, it was a direct deposit. And when you, this is the number you use when you need to request your funding. Anyway, they're like, we're not telling you, you did, did get a grant, but we're not telling you, you didn't either and you're just gonna have to wait.
Sounds like sequestration.
So anyway, it sounds like what?
Sequestration maybe, uh, took a hit on this.
According to the, they, they came out and said that was gonna screw things up. Then they came back out with an email and said that would have no effect on this year's grants. So anyway, so we're still waiting on that. Um, new computer part of the reason.
How much are you looking at, do you think?
Eighty-six thousand. We would be responsible for five percent.
About forty-six, I just had that put in my account. Did you see an increase in the?
Nigeria making.
Dick just thought he was doing a good job.
Why, cause you'd be down a floor. Whenever I wanted to.
Two new computers in and, and some records are lost or whatever and, and so, anyway, it's just been a, a real pain. But, um, new operating systems and all that, so I didn't warn, had a lot of problems getting the systems up and running. Uh, new business, life pack contracts, I'm just giving you a heads up, thirty-two hundred and forty dollars. This is, uh.
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two hundred and forty dollars. We have funded this every year, it comes out of our operating, uh, budget.
Life, life packs.
Life packets, the, uh, the three heart monitor defibrillator pacer units that Licking Memorial purchased us. This, we get more than our share of money back with the batteries and things and they come in, we usually get the batteries and all. And, and we've had a couple of units go bad and, and, uh, it's paid, as I said, paid more money towards fixing the units over the years.
Is that a budgeted thing?
This is a budgeted thing, but I'm just telling you, we're gonna renew that. He's, hasn't got the paperwork yet, but he'll have to sign it because it's a contract. Uh, we got a new water rescue trailer that, uh, we're, it's in-house and we're slowly converting our county water rescue trailer. The city doesn't have a dime in this, the rescue team purchased it, a twenty-foot enclosed. All that I've been utilizing the duty crew when available to, uh, outfit the interior side of it or whatever. But so far, um, we've been tapping in the, uh, police fund that he was talking, he doesn't know that. That's how we've been paying for this. Anyway, but it been utilized the crew and eventually, uh, hopefully the goods will get its skin and such. And, uh, I too, I mentioned the Bob Evans thing on Thursday night and that's all I have.
I knew, I just read it somewhere.
Yep, it was on your paper.
There was the all decks.
I'm really not playing, we're all have.
Tim, you have a question?
Yeah, not really a question, but when the chiefs are talking about mutual aid and police and stuff, uh, just to bring you guys up to date. When they do the paving on Thirtieth Street, Newark police officers are going to traffic control.
Okay.
For Thirtieth Street.
The fifteen? Was it yours?
It's went from science to.
Yeah, the chief server asked me.
They're removing the science in.
Yeah, I said, how about?
So that way Newark will do all of Thirtieth Street, Newark's gonna do, uh, West Main Street and they'll do part of Cherry Valley Road. But right at Cherry Valley Road and sixteen, that Bob Evans area, Granville police officer can do that.
They looking good for getting that St. Street Bridge open by the end of the month?
Yep, the plant's open up, asphalt.
Yeah.
It's been waterproofed and everything, just waiting on asphalt.
Okay. So what kind of delays and so forth are looking on the St. Street?
Well, depending on if they ever do the railroad tracks and we don't know when that's gonna happen. They're either, we're either gonna nonperform, join up with the railroad tracks and paving, leaving so far back like maybe a hundred, two hundred feet or better back from the railroad tracks on both sides.
Without being waste.
And then, and then when they would do the railroad tracks, then come back in and.
Now's the time to do it.
When they just go on a fair and pave right over top of that?
Well.
Then let a train go down through there.
Quite a few industries like to utilize those tracks every once in a while. I, I'd like to see them stay in operation.
But, you know.
Wait till that comment hits the.
If the river, you know, if the railroad track people get in and get it done and they're, we're gonna let them shut the road down completely. So they can do it, they're supposed to be able to do it four days if they can, and they wanna do it like Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday or something like that. Uh, shut it down completely. So that'll have an effect on fire.
I was gonna say, if that happens, we gotta know.
You know, and everything.
So that, so that these guys can know.
Yeah.
All right.
But, and all the surrounding people too, cause like Hebron, but I mean, you also.
Yeah, they all use Thirtieth Street.
So, yeah, EMS, Ninety-Eighth Street. But, but I still think the contractor, I mean, if Cosey was planning to be out of here by the time the schedule for the railroad tracks says to do it. So I don't know what's gonna happen. So it looks like Cosey may locate out, do other stuff and then come back later. So we, they may stop way back, I mean, they may stop, not do any of the Newark part. I mean, they may just do whatever they do in Heath stop and then skip over to Main Street and do up through Granville and then, you know.
Come back.
Come back in June or July or August or whatever, finish it up.
I'm sure they're happy about that.
And of course we'll have to pay remobilization and all that kind of stuff, so.
All right.
Any other questions?
Good journey.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Did you go to, uh?
Oh, hey, uh, just so y'all know, uh, the fire department did not get a run call on me running that five K. And I was able to, to make the whole run without stopping and, uh, my time was thirty-two minutes and fifty-five seconds.
So they were busy and Newark covered for them?
Yeah, yeah, I jogged it the whole, the whole way.
Did you, uh, did you check out the math before you went, so you were gonna go to get?
Yeah, yeah.